So we'll call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock and we'll start by reviewing our agenda and seeing if there's any changes. Does anybody have any?
We do have a fleet permit to add.
Great. All right.
So I'm thinking doing that down under the road commissioners report.
Yeah, will you help me not forget please?
Right.
And then I had gotten a call that asking if we would move up the discussion about the Green Mountain Power. Annette Smith's been in contact with them and she has some information she'd like to share with us. So if we could move that up to, not sure, can't remember where I told her that I would put it. Why don't we put it after our vote for the library shelves? Annette, are you here now? Not yet. So we'll put it there and if she's not on, then we can have Bob go first and slide it in there afterwards. But if we don't.
I was muted, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So we'll put it in after the vote on the library shelves.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do have a little concern though, because the way the agenda is posted, I, in case there are other people who want to weigh in on it. I mean, I'm not sure why you're taking it up tonight, so.
They've asked, they've asked for us to sign off on the project.
Because I'd been looking for some sort of public notice in the paper, which is usually what precedes this sort of discussion and I hadn't seen it.
Yeah, I can, I'll tell you what, while, I'll tell you what, why don't we put you, I'll suggest that we put you after Bob's report and Bob, maybe while you're giving your report, I can, I can send you Annette what I have so that you can see. How's that sound?
Fine. I mean, I really, I really appreciate it if it can get moved up. I just, as I said, I, I do have a little concern that it, you know, he might have to take it up again later if more people tune in later. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, if we do, we can. We mentioned it before on a previous meeting, it had come up and, and, you know, and we didn't have any interest, so. Yeah. Any other changes to the agenda? Not hearing any? I'd love to hear a motion that we accept the agenda with the amendment that we add the fleet permit and that we move the Green Mountain Power discussion up.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Have to do a roll call vote, so we'll start with Brad.
Yes.
Do we get a second?
Oh, yes, there was a second.
I got Brad Bender and who gave the second?
Doug.
Doug.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. So back to the vote, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay. So we have amended our agenda. Moving on. If people have had a chance to review the meeting minutes from December 10th, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Doug, do we hear a second?
I'll second it.
I heard two. I think Steve was the loudest. Does that work for you, Tris? All right, any discussion? Okay, we'll, we'll call that, Brad? Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. Doug?
Yeah.
And Paul?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so moving on, our next order of business is to vote on the request for $3,249.99 from the Silas Griffith Fund for the Courier Memorial School library shelves. You remember that Amanda Bagan came to our meeting last month and explained and showed us pictures and everything, the shelves, and I included that in the packet of things for everybody. And we were going to do some research about the Silas Griffith Fund and we found out that there, there is money there and, Brad, do you have anything to add about, about the fund? I know that it was you who was, had been asking questions about it.
Right. Now, the money is there. The only thing that came to mind was I wish they had contacted Vermont Store Fixtures because store fixtures has been very good to the town over the years and I do like to support local businesses.
Yeah, yeah, good, good point. We can, we can, we can say that. I, I, I mean, it's up to all of us whether we want to, to hold this up for that. I kind of had the sense that they were, you know, the books are on the floor and that students are, you know, being impacted by it, so. The other thing I would just add as a note here is that I did get a note from Herb Ogden asking about the Silas Griffith Fund monies and also the Catherine Griffith Fund monies, which are, the Catherine Griffiths Fund are for music classes and music instruction and the Silas Griffith is for any school and for Dambie children. And that they, he seemed to be making an inference that if we don't spend the money every year, that we should be giving it over to the Consolidated School Board to, for them to manage. And that's not our understanding of how the funds work. And so I did send a note back to him saying that, you know, you know, we've had this request and that typically we approve requests if the money's there and, you know, that I don't see any reason to change the way we've allocated those funds because of the school consolidation. And I haven't heard anything back from him. So, so I'm assuming that, you know, I mean, I wasn't even sure if he knew about Amanda's request, so I let him know about that. And I haven't heard anything, so I don't see any reason for us not to go ahead and vote on this.
Hey Lynn, on one note, these were Dambie people that donated when they passed away to go to Dambie students.
Yeah.
And my concern is even though we're consolidated, as long as we got a school here, I don't, down the road, if we're not on the board or anybody, I, I don't feel we should put it into the district because this is meant for Dambie. I would rather see it, you know, to stay right in Dambie and use it appropriately no matter, no matter what.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think we probably all feel that way. Does anybody feel differently?
I completely agree with Paul and, for instance, in the past, let this fund build and that's why there was the $30,000 to do the paving work. So I would rather keep it just the way it is.
Yeah. Well, and if I hear anything different from Herb, I mean, I sent back the note that basically said, you know, this is how it is and we don't see any reason to change it. If, if he has a problem with that, I suspect I'll hear from him and if so, I'll make sure I forward that to everybody. So would I hear a motion to approve the funds for the school library shelves?
Go move.
That's Paul. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Was that Brad?
Yes.
Great. Any further discussion?
In the amount of $3,249.99.
Correct. Okay, I'll call. Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Lynn is yes too. Very good. All right. We will let Amanda know. Um, uh, let's see. And actually, is, is, is Doug White, our treasurer, on the call tonight?
He's on.
He's on, okay, great. Because we've got a, so, so good. Doug, you know, approve that, yay. All right. So, Annette, no, go ahead, please.
Is it showing it on there, on Tobin's end that he's on?
That Doug's on? I didn't.
There's a caller eight. That could be him. Is that you, Doug?
Speak Doug and we'll know.
He can, he can hear us, but. You can hear him.
Speak on computer or phone?
I don't know.
Ah.
Cell phone, I think he said.
Yeah.
It should be on the phone. If he's caller eight, it's someone calling in on the phone.
Yeah. So then the only thing is he might have muted himself. Isn't star six the way that you mute on the phone calls?
No, he's not muted.
No. Well, maybe he stepped away for a minute. Anyway, we'll make, we'll make a point of letting him know that it's, he's authorized to release those funds. So, um, let's see. So we could either go ahead with Bob or Annette, we could do the old Otis discussion. I, I don't have a problem, I don't, I think it's unlikely somebody's done. If you want us to, uh, oh, I know. Let's, let's go ahead and Bob, will you do the implementation query report and I'll send to Annette what I've got so that we're all on the same playing field for the old Otis Road discussion?
Okay. All right, so Lynn. Lynn, sent out the document I'm going to go through here. It's gonna be pretty quick tonight, hopefully. I'm going to provide you guys a recap of the planning commission's input from last week's meeting. And then need some guidance on economic development and where we take that. And then next steps, the status reports in the appendix, no changes from last month. And then the last topic is the revised attendance policy that I'll, the planning commission gave a lot of input on that as well that I'll share with you guys. Page two, you know, just recapping the input from the planning commission. The commissioners agreed that the transfer station discussions, and you guys may want to mute your phone if you're not talking, there's some background noise. They agreed the transfer station discussions with Mount Tabor should be top priority. From an economic development perspective, you know, the consensus was that the town should really stay focused on small wins to gain traction. You know, don't take too many things on at once. Very interested in getting a farmer's market established as like a first step. And as part of that discussion, the Dambie marketplace and shops that are down here in the village that Nancy Lee Kennedy set up at the nickel store and Herb Ogden's old office. You know, I provided him background on, you know, the services that Nancy Lee and partners have set up, including the Italian deli, which is open most days, crafts games, antiques, bakery goods, Fridays in the weekends. They also have plans to open a farmer's market in the warmer months, so the planning commission asked to have Nancy Lee and her partners come to the next meeting and, you know, provide more background and, you know, encourage them to work with the local folks to, you know, get engaged and be part of the farmer's market, you know, getting that set up. And I should have put on this page, the attendance policy also was discussed quite a bit and really great feedback. I think the summary on that is, you know, it was too complicated, you know, where we had, it really should just be focused on appointed positions that are required to attend meetings. And I had a bunch of other, you know, like viewer of defenses and wearer of coals who don't go to meetings. So the, you know, main change there was eliminating all those positions. And then they also asked that I touch base with Janice to make sure that we had all the positions identified. And there were a couple that Janice added, so I'll go through that when I share the updated policy. Any questions on the planning commission feedback before I move on? Okay. Page three. This really is, I just need guidance from you guys on where you want to go with economic development. And, you know, when you consider the discussion at the planning commission, you know, take it a step at a time to gain momentum, focus on things we can tackle. And what I pulled out here are all these things in the plan that really don't require Mount Tabor's involvement. So the farmer's market, we talked about, you know, this partnering with Smokey House to see if we can expand their mission to attract more people into the town. You know, looking to attract private investors around, you know, beer, manufacturing and cannabis hemp industries. You know, promoting, keeping, you know, the businesses we have in town, working with the Marble Line around attracting tourists. You know, promoting the ease of doing business in Dambie, looking at local property tax relief to attract businesses. And then some kind of annual event that would bring businesses, tourism and transportation together. Those are all kind of the, the things we could tackle that, you know, wouldn't require teaming with Mount Tabor. The second part of this is, or, you know, should we really look at getting that economic development committee with Mount Tabor set up? And, you know, these tasks that I was here, these all require Mount Tabor's engagement, right? So, you know, revitalizing the retail quarter on Route 7, the light industry industrial park, the, improving the connection to the village in Route 7, working with towns, you know, to develop biking and hiking trails. And then this off course concept with Dambie and Mount Tabor. So, you know, what is your perspective here? You know, do we do, you know, like the, the planning commission's thinking tackle, you know, these, these things that we can kind of take a bit at a time? Should we organize this thing with Mount Tabor or do we do a little, a little bit of both of these two? Kind of looking for guidance from you guys on that.
Well, I don't think we should do nothing to this. It's over. I don't think we want to bring in any more people in this town than we have to.
Okay.
I think we ought to concentrate just on Dambie before we worry about anybody else.
That's right. Yeah, I don't think we'll have to worry about all this, the other business and stuff, you know, with this goddamn, you know, until that's done.
Okay. All right.
Uh, where does the transfer station fall? Because we had said at our last meeting that we want to make that a priority. And that is, and it might be a nice way to just, you know, a very practical way that serves our needs as well as theirs and might help us build relationship.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. And then the next page, we'll talk about next steps, but that's not part of the economic development section. It's the facilities and, but yeah, I know what you're saying. I mean, we could use that as an entree to see how it goes and look at this other piece later.
Yeah. And by, and by the time that's all done, who knows what will happen, you know, with, with our pandemic and everything else. So that might be a place to start.
Okay. How about others? Brad, any feedback or Paul?
Yes. One of the things that came out at the Vermont League webinar yesterday was getting the towns to vote on the cannabis business. So my feeling is that we should add another article to our warning and let's see where the town stands on it. And I don't know if you want me to read the proposed language now or when we get to the warning, but I think it would be good to have the town vote and then we know what we stand, yes or no.
I'd love to.
Yeah, that's great, Brad. That way we can see where that ends up and whether we need to focus or not.
Oh, either, you know, that would be something to work with or you'd say, no, we're not going to waste our.
Right. That's good.
Familiar with what exactly they're asking us to, would you mind reading the language now, Brad?
Uh, yes. The Vermont legislature passed a law back in October, which is 7 VSA 863 that legalizes the sale of cannabis. So right now, we already have state law that allows things like laboratories and whatnot cultivating. So we would capture it all in one question, which would be, shall the town of Dambie, Vermont allow the operation of cannabis retailers or so-called integrated licensees? For example, persons licensed by the state to engage in the activities of a cultivator, wholesaler, product manufacturer, retailer, or testing laboratory pursuant to 7 VSA subsection 863.
Thank you. And, and this is very clearly, this is cannabis, this is not hemp.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah.
There was an article, excuse me, also in the recent Vermont League newsletter. I don't know if you all get that or not, but they had it in there and then they talked about it quite a bit yesterday.
Okay. Well, then when we get to talk about the warning, now we know what we may want to add to the warning. I'm glad they provided the language. That's helpful.
Okay. I'm sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
No, please, Bob, continue. I was just going to hand it back to you.
Yeah. So anything else on page three? Otherwise we'll move on to next steps. That was all, that was good guidance, guys. Thank you very much. All right. So the first one is the transfer station. You know, through email exchange with Brad, it seems like you all don't need my help there. You know, what I was thinking when I did volunteer though, for you to consider, you know, typically I would think you would want to get a letter of intent, which is not a legal document. It's something that you just back and forth between the two towns, crystallizing, you know, what you really want to do and coming to agreement. And then, and sometimes financials are included as that, you know, in part of that letter of intent. And that really is something that would be served up to the lawyers then to finalize and formalize. But it really shrinks down the amount of money you spend on a lawyer. So I do that kind of thing for a living and if the town needs the help on that, I'm happy to do that.
Well, at this point in time, I think it's best if, if we just start off informal and small and, and just see what we're looking at before we put anything out there.
I think, I think both those things that you've just said, you know, are true. I think we, we have to start off with the discussions and then I think what I'm hearing is that if we get to the point where it's more than just talk over the backyard fence and we want to put something down, I think a letter of an intent is a great way to go. Because as Bob said, that's something we can hand the lawyers and they can handle their lawyers and it can help expedite things if you get to that stage. But I agree with you, Steve, that first we, we really just need to have a, 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 a meeting with them to scratch our heads together and I hope we can make that happen.
We, we do have this on the fast track and Seth Bowregard, who's the chair of the Mount Tabor Select Board, had a conversation with me today and are trying to get a date. We were hoping it would have been yesterday, but his people didn't come through with that. Today now, and I should be meeting with them and, you know, just getting that informal conversation going.
Great.
Very good. Right. Let me skip, are we good on transportation for now? Okay. I mean, the, the offer's there. If you need my help, glad to do it. Just let me know, all right? Um, okay. On the, I'm going to skip attendance. We'll do that last. Town garage renovations, relocation. You know, the thought here is that we would build off of the work we did here. I guess it was two or three years ago where we studied options for the town garage renovation relocation. But get out a small subcommittee work group together, folks from the planning commission and citizens that want to volunteer. Dust off that work and come back with some more recommendations around the town garage. Is that something you all want me to do or do you want to hold on that?
I don't think we had a hold on.
And didn't we vote that we're not going to relocate it?
Yeah, we did.
That's what I thought.
Okay, I didn't, I missed that. So sorry about that.
I, I think what we're trying to do is relocate the transfer station and then I think the conversation becomes how do we best utilize the site that we have and what needs to be done to improve it. That's how I think.
So do you want work to start on that? Or do you, would you prefer we hold on that as well?
Well, let's wait. Yeah, let's wait till we get this transportation thing ironed out.
Okay.
At least let's, let's, you know, if we all agree in principle that we're going forward, we, we don't need to maybe wait till it's all, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But let's at least know if we're able to move the transfer station or not before we make those other decisions.
Okay, very good. And then this broader citizen participation. I did run this idea by the board for Dambie, Mount Tabor now. And I think like similar to what we're hearing tonight, it's like take a step at a time. Don't try to tackle it all at once. Pick one thing that could be a win. So we're still talking about it and haven't settled in on, on what would make sense. But I'll let you know next time, you know, I give you an update where that lands. On the grants, I did, the first one is the Better Connection Grant. And, you know, I pursued this because it could help with the economic development work. So I did meet with Devin Neary, a transportation planner at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. He said this grant would be right up its alley. It certainly could support that. But he said it's extremely competitive. He felt, you know, we really should get further along in, you know, the relationship with Mount Tabor. And if that kind of starts coming to fruition, then it may really, you know, beef up our application and give us better chances to show that we've got that all kind of moving. And it, this, this grant is not offered every year. It's periodically. So, you know, if it's a year, a year and a half from now, maybe that'll be available and maybe we have made some progress there. He also said he's willing to assist and participate, you know, as we move this along as well, just to give us advice along the way. So that was really good of him to do that. The Better Places Grant, I met with Richard Amore. This grant is really focused on public art. So one of the proposals was a mural on the backside of the names wall at the Veterans Memorial. He thought it would be wonderful. A good chance. He gave a lot of guidance around how to enhance the application. So I'll be submitting that prior to the due date. And one of the, who's he suggested is a letter from the select board supporting this kind of project, if you guys are willing to do that. And if you want to, if you want to kind of ghostwrite it for you and then you can tweak it.
That'd be great. If you draft something for us to consider, that'd be fabulous. What's the deadline on this, Bob?
22nd of January.
Okay. So can we all agree that we'll, we'll send the letter around via email and if people are okay with it, they can just sign their name to it and send it along?
Sure.
Okay. Great.
All right. So the last piece is attendance policy and that's on page five. And as I said, the real change here is just getting rid of those positions that are not required to attend any meetings. So it's shortened the names way down. Janice added in the grand jurors. Apparently those are going to be appointed now. And solid waste representative and the alternate, alternate for that as well. But otherwise, that's the only change since the last time. I'm not sure what you guys want to do next on it, if you feel like it has to be posted again or if you want to vote on it.
So I think if we've changed it, we have to still do two readings and so we'd need a first reading of the amended one. Is that, anybody?
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll get the second posting out there again and ask Janice to post it and put it at the other spots. I'll take care of that.
And, and can we tonight let our minutes reflect that this is our, our first reading of the amended policy? And do, should we read it? Do we actually have to read it out loud so everybody can hear it? We probably should.
No, I'll go ahead.
Please.
All right. So the purpose of this policy is intended to support full contribution of select board appointees who participate in periodic meetings or events, including grand jurors, that should have an S on it, Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Rutland Regional Planning Commission alternate, Rutland County Transportation, Transportation Council, Rutland County Transportation Council alternate, solid waste representative, solid waste representative alternate, Dambie Planning Commission. Will be reviewed by the select board during the annual organizing meeting to determine if any changes to the policy are needed. Will be provided to these appointees when initially enacted and then after, when appointed by the select board. The definition and identification of an attendance problem. An attendance problem occurs if an appointee has three absences in a row. This is one-third of the total number of scheduled meetings in a 12-month period. Valid attendance can be in-person or over video conference or telephone. Meeting minutes will be reviewed quarterly by the Select Board Chair to identify any problems. The Select Board's response to an attendance problem. If an attendance problem exists, the Select Board Chair will promptly contact the appointee to discuss the situation. The appointee's response will be chaired by the Chair with the rest of the Select Board at the next meeting. In that meeting, the Board will decide what action to take. And if terminating the appointment is warranted, the Board will notify the appointee as soon as possible and begin the recruiting process by posting the opening on Front Porch Forum. Identification of the replacement appointee should occur at the next Select Board meeting or as soon as practical after that.
Thank you.
Can I just add a clarification to that?
Yes.
The alternates, I know they're included, but they're not required to be at a meeting if the main appointee is there. So, that, that's kind of a sticky wicket.
Right.
We just wanna clarify that they're not, they are not required to go to every single meeting that the, um, the main appointee is going to.
Right, the criteria might be different for the alternates. Maybe we should leave the alternates off the list and, and deal with them, you know, because I, I don't think we, we wouldn't be doing that unless we had a problem with the regular attendee, so.
Right, if for some reason the regular attendee could not attend and the alternate did not go.
Right.
So yeah, I think, I agree, you should, should leave the alternates off.
Okay, I got rid of them.
Perfect.
Alright, thank you, that's all I got tonight, appreciate it.
I have two things. First of all, we learned yesterday that the position of grand juror no longer exists by state law. So, if we have a grand juror who, whose term expires, we'll say in 2021 or 2022, they still hold their office, but after that, a new one is not elected. And the thinking of the legislature was, it's a very antiquated thing because towns now use town attorneys. So, so that position is pretty much null and void. We can take that off. And the other thing would be, I don't like limiting advertising to just Front Porch Forum. So I would want it to at least also be in our newspaper record, which is News Guide.
Okay, I added it.
So, I mean, you could put family or whatever else.
Yeah.
I think you just see that a little more open.
Yeah, we could, we could just reference our policy for advertising that lists three places. I'm not sure what the would be, but, but that way, that way we'd be listing these openings the same place we list everything else.
So I'll just say according to what?
I don't have quite the words for it. Um.
I would say
Yep.
that in the legal places around town. Front Porch Forum, Vermont News Guide. And any social.
If I could just generalize it, right, according to the town's advertising policy?
Yeah, I mean, every year, every year when we have our first organizational meeting, we make a policy about where we're gonna advertise everything and we choose the venues. And so as long as we follow that same policy, we'd be doing what we do for everything else. Does that work for you Brad?
Um, yeah, but I'd like to also mention those other ones, that it's as broad-based as possible.
So like, social media?
Yeah, so it's, it's the legal places we post in town, which is our policy that you're talking about. It's Front Porch Forum, it's our newspaper of record, and any other social media.
So Front Porch and the newspaper are our legal places. So it's a little redundant, is all I'm saying.
But Bob, the credit just said Front Porch Forum.
No, I'm scratching it Brad, and I said according to the town's advertising policy and then I'll say and, social media forums.
Yeah.
Because that can change from time to time.
Right. So that way it's flexible. Okay. And can you clarify on the grand jurors? Because Janice made it sound like the Select Board is gonna start appointing grand jurors, is that not right?
Um, when she wrote that email, that was her understanding, but that was made very clear at yesterday's webinar, that, um,
Okay.
that's not the.
Alright, so I'm striking grand jurors, all the alternates, and I added the advertising stuff we just talked about. Those are the changes.
Great, so then that's, that becomes our first reading of our new policy and we'll revisit that at our next meeting. Thank you Bob, thank you Shelley.
And I'm gonna sign off, alright guys, I'll I'll come back later, alright?
Right. I've got my.
Now you have to have a motion to adopt that.
Yes, exactly. So I would hear a motion? For the attendance policy?
I didn't hear what Brad said.
Oh, we, we needed a motion to adopt that reading of the, as the first reading of the attendance policy.
I'll make the motion.
Great, do I hear a second?
I'll second it, I'll second it.
I'll second, um, so those in favor, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yep. Okay, um, so that's great. So next up on our agenda, um, is, well, let's see, Shelley, are you still with us?
I am.
Uh, do you want to do your RPC report, or do you, does that kinda make sense to go after the Planning Commission report? If you wanted to do that now?
That's fine, it's pretty short. Uh, the Plan, Rutland Regional met in November, I think the 16th, and at the time decided not to meet in December at all. And pretty much the only things that were up were, uh, let's see, solar, solar in Pittsburgh. I believe there were three. And one of them, the solar, you know, distributor, the contractor, he did everything right, and on the other two, and it was just 45-day warnings, and on the other two, they really hadn't gone through the town to do anything. So Rutland Regional Planning Commission decided to re-educate those other two to the fact that they need to go to the town before they propose a site and fly it by Rutland Regional. And that was pretty much it.
Okay. So still a lot of activity with solar, okay?
Oh yeah, for sure. And the only other thing I would say, and it doesn't pertain to Rutland Regional, but we do, I do have Megan, we have Megan Sullivan on the phone too about the West Side issue.
Oh, okay. Alright, um, let's, uh, let's jump to our Green Mountain Power and Old Otis Road issue with Annette first and then, um, then if, if, uh, if folks want to, we could maybe shift things around for the, well, uh, well, let's see, let's, let's, let's do Old Otis Road and keep moving it, okay?
Yeah.
So, so the Old Otis Road thing is that we, the town has received a request from Green Mountain Power for the town to approve a project and they sent maps and I've, um, you know, Steve, I've mentioned this to you before, since you're along that road and, um, you know, to take a look at it. I, I will say that in my experience with Green Mountain Power, or actually it was CVPS back in the day, of course we all want power and power is important, but, um, uh, but they might not necessarily think of the needs of the landowners and aesthetics and other things unless we ask them to. And in my experience, when they've been asked to, they've been very responsive. So I think it, it behooves us as the town to take a look at any proposal and see if it, you know, um, uh, meets our needs as a town and if, if it's, you know, if there's any potential downsides to it that could be mitigated with a change in, you know, design or whatever. And, um, and I don't know, Steve, have you had a chance to look at it? And I know Annette's on the phone and she has had a chance to take a look at it and so I, we can hear from her too.
What I've seen for their polls, where they've marked for their polls and, and what I've looked at for what's been emailed, I have no issue with it.
I don't either. And my, my opinion is, coming from drones down across my swamp, that's where the pole, where the line broke this last time the power was out. And two o'clock in the morning, it was down there in that swamp, with water up to their chest. Because the beavers got it dammed up so down there, so they wanna eliminate that line coming over to the burn. And they're gonna, uh, put underground from my pole, by my house, down towards the four corners to meet that line there. We can eliminate that.
That's a different.
I think we just oughta give them permission to do it.
We might be talking about two different projects though.
They're two different projects. Can I speak?
Yeah, let's, let's let Annette tell us, because we've only been asked about one project, Annette. We don't know about the other projects, so, um.
It was helpful for you to send me the letter, because now I have a better understanding of what's going on. Both of the, the two different projects, I only found out about the one you're talking about Doug, um, a few days ago. I've been dealing with Green Mountain Power about the Old Otis Road one for more than a year. Both of the projects are going to go through Act 250. And the district coordinator is a new district coordinator and she's backed up because the longtime district coordinator retired. So procedurally, when I see this letter here, it seems a little premature to be asking the town for just sort of blanket approval because I think, and to sort of help us cut this conversation short, this isn't really the time to be looking at the actual details of the proposal. However, they're asking you for a letter to approve it. The, the issue in, for the Old Otis Road project, um, is that it is in the karst aquifer. And so I initially asked them, because my water comes from over there, I have spring water. And as we learned with the Omea pump test, um, the effects can go out quite far. And there are stories of, for instance, Martha Ricketts used to water her cows at her neighbors and Omea was doing pore drilling and the spring vanished. And recently, another landowner in that area told me that the spring all of a sudden showed up. So it's a, it's, it's a karst aquifer and so I was concerned initially that they were planning to use pentachlorophenol-treated poles, which should not be used where they come in contact with water supplies. And there are a lot of big springs, like Wright Spring in Tinmouth, that are underground in Dandy and they start up on the mountain and they go underground. And nobody really knows, because you can't trace them in a karst aquifer, that the water moves around in very exotic ways. It can be like river and ribbons, there can be, it can go up and down and all around and it can go for long distances unfiltered. And so Brad, we kinda made a mistake when we drew that well, that source protection area on the town map because it only goes as far, it, it stops at a certain point. We should've taken it all the way up to the Tinmouth line. So, what they've done, they, they, Green Mountain Power apparently has a brand-new technology to underground power lines and they're quite excited about it. And so they revised the project, well, first of all, they, they first tried to not go through Act 250 and, um, the state said, no, there's all kinds of issues there. So they revised the project. So part of it involves replacing existing poles. Uh, part of it involves new poles and part of it involves undergrounding it. And so, the, the, the things that I've been asking them to do are not to do any work during the times that the herb species are, um, moving and I believe they've agreed to do that. Um, they are still using pentachlorophenol poles in some places. And, uh, the, the problem we, we, a number of us experienced in the past when there were issues with work in that area was that if something happened, how do, how do we know to connect it? And so I've just been asking them to do some sort of, uh, notice, like on Front Porch Forum or something or, you know, letters to the people who live in the valley, because there are not that many of us, uh, to let us know that the work has begun. And then my other, uh, request was to please don't do it during drought because then there's no way of knowing if their work interfered with the water supply. I don't know how many other people are on springs or rely on springs, but I do. And I know that the, the spring water comes from over there. And so, I, I'm trying to actually help Green Mountain Power avoid any unintended consequences by doing this work in the aquifer. At a certain point coming up later, maybe in a week, maybe in two weeks, there will be a, a public notice or maybe a month, who knows? There will be a notice that Act 250 is going to ask the town for input and anybody else, a hearing can be requested. I'm not interested in a hearing, I've been just trying to negotiate something with Green Mountain Power to address the concerns. And it would be helpful to me if the town would support those. But at this point, I'm not sure why they need your support at this point until there's been, the, the process has started at Act 250, which it really hasn't, although the application for both of these projects are, are available and, and can be reviewed. Though I'm not opposed to the project, but by undergrounding it, it affects wetlands, so they did get a wetlands permit. And it involves cutting more trees. And I do not have a sense of what those trees are or how many of them there are. The application is deficient in, in those details. And so, there might be reason to ask Green Mountain Power to be more specific about the, the, the details. I also don't know if they're gonna be putting in taller poles or if it's the same size poles. Those things are not in the application. So, that, that's kind of the story.
So you're saying that, that, that they're asking us to sign off on it, but they're, it's kinda detail-light. They're not providing the details that we, you know, have a responsibility to, to, to understand before we sign off on it. Is that?
That's right, yes. In other words, I see no reason for you to do anything right now, um, because they're, you know, I, the, the district coordinator has been letting me know and so has the point person for Green Mountain Power, that they are expecting this to be taken up at some point. But because of the backlog at Act 250, uh, it, it, it just, you know, hasn't happened yet. And on the other one Doug, um, those materials are online and I've looked at them and, um, you know, I, I agree, getting it out of that swamp is a good idea and they've agreed to not do it during the herb species and some of it would be undergrounded. Um, and I don't have any issues with that project at all. I, you know, I hope it improves the aesthetics of the area and maybe the undergrounding will make it so that, you know, there won't be so many bone poles. But other than that, um, the, the sensitivity of the karst aquifer however, is a very real issue for those of us who live dependent on water. And, you know, it may not be me that would be affected, it may be somebody over on Old Otis Road who has no idea. And how do you know when your waters, something happens to your water? That who would, who would even think to tie it into a project like this? And on the other hand, there may be no problem at all. So I just, I'd like to see some notification that, that makes sure that we all know when the work starts.
And then before you go further, what kind of species and what kind of aquifer?
It's a karst aquifer, K-A-R-S-T, and it, the species are herpetological.
My snakes.
Like.
Reptiles and amphibians.
Jefferson salamanders, uh, wood turtles, all of those. There's some, there's some rare species that have been identified and that they acknowledge in the application.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Great, well that's helpful. And let me just be clear, so, so Old Otis Road is one of the applications, then the other one is the East Road? Right, going right past your place Doug?
Tinmouth Road.
Yes.
Tinmouth Road, yeah, okay. Alright.
And it's listed in Act 250 as pending, so it's even further behind.
Okay.
It was filed for very recently. This other one was filed for in 2019 and then they tried to make it go away and that didn't, and then they revised it.
Okay.
They have to cut some trees down on the power lines or we're gonna lose our power every time the wind blows. There's no getting around that. There's no getting around that.
It, it's interesting that the, they said that the burying of the power line is actually going to result in more trees being cut.
Probably because they don't want, if, if the trees are, come anywhere near the power lines, they gotta cut them back further than what they've been cutting them.
And in, in part, in part of the plan, it involves actually burying the line behind the row of trees. So in other words, it's, it's worth actually looking at the application materials more in detail, which what you guys got was not the application.
Yeah, it was hard for me looking at those maps to really get a clear picture of where, where they were talking about. And as he's pointed out, I didn't see what they were talking about for size of poles and things like that. But so what it sounds like to me though, is that we um, that, that although this app, this thing has come across our desk, that we have time to ask some questions and learn some more information about it.
You know, this is sort of like getting the permission before you actually know what you're, what you're saying yes to.
Yeah, it feels a little that way, yeah.
Well, and, and apparently the, the people who uh, uh, live on Old Otis Road um, have received the initial application. And I, I don't know if they've received this other one, because it really hasn't gone out for uh, the public notice yet. So I'm not sure if they even have gotten this revised thing.
Yeah. Steve, did you get it? You're, you're along there. Did you get the revised one other, other than through the select board?
Yes.
You did get it?
We've been receiving stuff from Green Mountain Power since last year. On this, even before last year, because uh, when they started marking poles on the Timmouth Road and on Old Otis Road, we received a postcard from them asking us to identify wells and springs that were anywhere near where they would be working.
Did you get anything uh, in 2020, in the last few months?
We got it in 2020, but it wasn't that much.
I know we got something in 2020. It might not have been the last few months, but there again, I've been getting stuff for, from the select board that was from Green Mountain Power.
Yeah, it was all revised as of October 12th of 2020.
I may have gotten October, I can't swear under the date.
Well, it sounds to me like it's helpful to know that it's not like an, oh my gosh, you know, we've got to do this right away. And we have time to um, you know, ask for some more information. Um, and so I guess what I'd suggest is if, that I, I'd reach out to Green Mountain Power and thank them for sending the thing and, and say that uh, you know, we're looking forward to hearing, you know, more about the project and that we, you know, um, and just, just do that. Does that sound good to everybody?
I think I'd like to um, have a list of specific questions that Annette feels need to be asked.
Sure.
Provide you with that, it's pretty simple.
How deep do they build to set a pole? How deep do they trench? How wide a swath do they cut to uh, bury?
Not a very, not very wide.
One of the options that
I saw.
Once it does go at notice to Act 250, is it, that the town could request a hearing and given how the world is working these days, it would just be a Zoom meeting. Um, so that might be one way of, of getting answers that would be sort of pretty simple.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it would be helpful, Annette, if you would put together a list of questions. And Brad, what you just rattled off are, are good things too. And we'll, we'll start with that. We'll start with just explaining that we are looking for more information and, and these are the kinds of information we're looking for. And then we'll suggest that maybe there be a, a public Zoom meeting about it so that we can all learn more.
And then people who live along the road might be interested too.
Right.
Actually, I've been dealing much more with the Public Utility Commission in the last few years. And I've been surprised reading, reading this application, how deficient it is compared to what one, what I would see at the PUC. There would be details of the pole heights and things and it's just slacking in that, the engineering details.
Well, and I know from my work, you know, when I used to be at Smoke House when it was D V P S, um, you know, it, they didn't provide those details unless I asked, but they were always very willing to when I asked. And, and if there was a problem, they were willing to work on changes in design. So I think it's more than.
G N P, they moved a pole on my property, but they hired a guy who's actually a former district coordinator and he's been kind of unpleasant to deal with.
They're crap.
Unfortunate. All right, well, I think that um, that's helpful. Um, and I think we can move on unless anybody has anything to add on that topic.
Well, I, personally, I'd feel better if we're gonna have a meeting that we have it in person with Green Mountain Power, cause there's people up on Blood Street that don't have computers. If we're worried about.
Yeah, we could do that outdoors, for meetings outdoors to look at what's there and if people mask up, everybody, it could happen outside. So when I, when I get back to them, I can, I can say that, you know, that we have citizens who would be interested in that, you know. And maybe we do both, you know, maybe, maybe they'd do both. Maybe they'd have a Zoom meeting and also if people have specific questions and want to meet outdoors, they can do that too.
A site visit.
Yeah, a site visit.
Describe what, what, what the project is. I don't know if, if they're doing site visits these days, but.
Right. We can find out. Yep, all right. Well, I'll reach out to them and I'll report back, you know, to uh, the rest of the select board and, and uh, but we, we won't precipitously sign something that we're not quite sure what they're asking, so.
And I'll get you some questions, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Annette. All right, let's see, moving on, um, uh, it looks like we could tackle our appropriations for the town warning. Um, so we had four additional requests come in. Um, one, we talked about it at the last meeting, it was the regional marketing, remember Lyle Jebson had joined us and, and had made a request. I think that was for thirteen hundred dollars. And um, and then uh, restorative justice, which is um, 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 court diversion and restorative justice um, has made a request. Um, I'm just looking to see how much the amount is. Um, uh, that one is for five hundred. Um, and Danby Mount Tabor Now, uh, that request came in, um, uh, I'm looking to see how much that one is. That one is for uh, a thousand. And Rutland Parent Child Center, which I think is asking for five hundred more than last year, if I'm remembering correctly. Let me take a look. No, yet, um, parent child, parent child. Um, even with my glasses, I can't find it. I know it's here, there it is. Um, yeah, last year was five, five hundred and they're asking for a thousand. Um, should, should we just vote on those all together or did anybody want to have a separate talk about them? I'd, I'd hear a motion to either do them separately or as a group, whatever people want to do.
Do them as a group.
Okay. So would you, you're making an emotion Doug to approve those uh, for inclusion as appropriations on our, in our town warning?
Yes, I will make a motion.
All right, in a second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, okay, discussion? Anybody have any questions?
I want to make sure that the, the Danby Mount Tabor Now is in fact replacing the Veterans Memorial and I wrote an email to you about that earlier today. Um, it was incorrectly listed as Veterans Memorial. So we're not having two appropriations, we're only having one. And it's to Dan Tabor Now.
Right, I haven't, we're still working on the warning, the language for the warning. So I, we might need to make sure we've done the adjustment there. If we look at the budget as we have it, it's, um, it's in here only as Danby Mount Tabor Now, it's not in here as Veterans Memorial. So I think, uh, yeah. So we'll have to keep an eye on that and make sure that the, the language is consistent. I also think that when the warning comes out, that we might want to, some of the way we have it written in the budget, um, we sort of know what it is, but I'm not sure that, um, I'm not sure other people would know what all the abbreviations are if they were voting on it. So, um, but I'm sure Janice is on top of that, we'll, we'll figure that out. So we've got a motion to accept all four of these to be included as appropriations on the um, town uh, warning. Um, um, I'd be happy to call uh, for a vote, Brad.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. All right, um, moving along, thinking we'll stay in, in tune with our budget, since we were just talking about appropriations for the budget. Um, Doug sent out the uh, uh, our, our sort of, our finalized budget. You know, there was just a few little things we were still looking at after our last budget meeting on the 10th of um, December. Um, essentially, it's the same as, as what we had. I think that there's uh, about twenty-one hundred dollars slid in for some additional um, uh, computers and hardware for the um, uh, that Janice needs. Um, that was a request of hers and we may even have had that in before, because it didn't change our bottom line. Um, the way the budget is, it's coming in at point five seven five, which is essentially, you know, it might be one one hundredth of a, you know, cent different than the last year, so it's level budgeting. Um, one thing that we did change and, um, and I, we can change it back, but um, we noticed that um, uh, that our special projects had gone from fifteen to thirty-one thousand. And um, and we were scratching our head to remember exactly why. And I, I'm pretty sure that it, it has to do with um, in part, that we wanted monies in case we can get any grants in this cycle, that we need to do matching, um, and uh, and, and some other things. But we decided that to, to, um, Doug and I talked about taking five thousand of that and putting it in the structures um, fund. It's, in other words, it's still available to us, but we, but, but instead of having one huge increase in one category, we'd put five thousand in structures and twenty-six thousand instead of thirty-one thousand in the um, um, what was the other one I just mentioned? Uh, now I've lost my train of thought, the, the um, um, uh, special projects.
Yeah, that's, that's that one. What are you said?
Yeah.
I forgot.
Yeah, so, but the bottom line's the same. And the only, the only difference is there's five thousand more in structures and five thousand less in special projects. But all of those are the same pots of money that we can use for things like, you know, if we, we, we need for the grants. Um, so I'd love if people feel good about this, as presenting this as a budget, which would be level funded in this year when the schools are um, anticipating a, a significant increase. And in this year when, because of COVID-19, we have some people whose income has been affected adversely. Um, yeah, I'd love to hear a motion to accept the budget.
I'm with you.
Okay, so we've got, uh, I heard, um, I heard Brad and I heard uh, Paul, I think. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, um, so uh, for approval of the, accepting the budget as written to be proposed to the town, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And Lynn? Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't go in order. I tried, I tried to pull. All right. That's right, that's right. So our next order of business is to review our um, draft notice for the Danby Transfer Station. And I think Paul, that's your time to bring up what some of the issues have been on the transfer station, if you'd like. Uh, because we kind of have to explain why we're thinking of putting forward a notification.
All right, like I said before, um, to Chris, this, I'm gonna be like rattling off a lot of stuff. So just um, kind of sum it all up into one. Uh, make it as short as possible, but last, well, I'll, I'll backtrack till December 15th. We got an inspection at our transfer station and it wasn't good. Uh, town got notified, I got notified. We had to clean it up, cause the state's clamping down really bad on everything. Uh, major items were, that they, the five-digit fines come out on are light bulbs and e-waste. And our, basically was a mess out there. Um, we had, you know, Cliffy, as you know, Cliffy just, you know, he sets stuff aside for certain people that collect stuff. And the state don't want to hear that stuff no more. So I spent last week probably a total of between two days, morning and afternoon for a while, probably a total of eight hours with Mark Shea from uh, Rutland Solid Waste, uh, to find out what we could do, because they were getting ready to find us. I mean, we're talking anywhere from ten to forty thousand dollars, which that would not help our budget. But anyways, I says, how can we clean this thing up and still keep stuff coming in? Because a lot of this stuff I thought was mandatory by the state, which is not. So, uh, I, I ran this by Lynn to write it up and so we do not have to take any refuge, what they call bulk items or metal. So that includes, you know, um, no tables, mattress or anything like that. And the metals and stuff, Cliffy always set them aside for uh, Rick Porter, whoever took our metals and which we can't do anymore. So we're not taking any of them items in. And the things that had to be kept in our shed that we built was light bulbs, which can be fined up to fifteen thousand dollars for an infraction, which you have to go by their guidelines. They have to be in a special container, which we have to buy. And before we can even transport them, especially the neon ones, they have to be stretch wrapped. And we have to pay, or pay somebody to take them to Gleason Road. And if one of these bulbs breaks, that's where the fine comes in. And also our e-waste, we were getting uh, way too much. Well, more than what we can handle and we have to make sure it gets taken off to Gleason Road. So eliminated the light bulbs, uh, and the e-waste. We're still taking food scraps, which uh, Steve's a part of this here and we're gonna use the building. Right now, we don't have to worry about it, but once bears come around, we're gonna use the building and try to mash the sack of the food scraps uh, in there with either something that's not gonna harm for taking it up to Steve. And any, any type of hazardous waste, and that's one of the questions. They said, do people come in and leave oil cans? Do they leave uh, anything? So when Cliffy comes in, what does he do with them? Well, Cliffy said it very seldom ever happens. But when it does, he just brings them into our, where we take care of it for the town garage. So that took care of that problem. So we're down to, the only thing we can take, and I'll read, read it off just the way Mark read it, is trash bags, which is called M S W, multiple solid waste. And that's anything that are, you know, it's, it's basically kitchen trash or anything around the house. And that's usually, most of the bags are black bags or the kitchen bags or anything. And then recyclable. And they didn't specify the color, but he said it has to be recycled material, which we ran into this problem before. And so it's down to, you either put the items in separate or you have clear plastic bags, so uh, they can be looked at before they get thrown in. And then, like I said, we got food scraps, so. I worked with Cliffy down there, Cliffy did a fantastic job. They wanted everything cleaned up. All the stuff that had gone over the bank, they were blaming it on wind. Part of it was the bear, which it never got totally picked up totally. But when they came, the ground was bare. And so we um, had to get it done. So I told Cliffy, you know, if you had to hire Steven to get down, we'd get everything picked up. So between the end of a week and a half ago to last Friday, if anybody's been down there, the place took a drastic change down there. It's, it's totally cleaned up. The sheds we got, we, they left um, the cardboard containers in there. So, and I told Cliffy, I said, you can't, you know, you can't put your stuff that you don't want to throw, you know, people bring in. you know, you can't put your stuff that you don't want to throw, you know, people bring in cans and bottles. You can't store them in there because the state just don't allow it. So I think we averted getting fined. I hope we did after all the time Mark and I spent on the phone, and there was, I'll be honest with you, Mark and me didn't see eye to eye right off the bat, and there was a lot of words that shouldn't have been said over the phone, but we finally came to our compromise, and I took pictures, and they're satisfied with what we did, so now we just gotta make sure we keep it that way. So it's basically keep our area cleaned down there for now, and then at some point, whether we want to go back into collecting this other stuff, which I do not myself, because it just creates more problems. So two other side notes on this, is I called around a couple of towns, and our prices, Mark did ask me what we charge for the three different sized bags, and I said, I told him, I says, well, it's one sticker for 13 gallon, which is 50 cents, and he was, I could almost see his jaw drop over the phone, he's like, you gotta be kidding. He said, our prices, they run on solid waste, and they run $2, $3, and $5. That's 13, 39 gallon and 55 gallon. He said, that's the standard price that everybody gets. Some places charge for recycle, most places don't. Some places also charge for food scraps by the gallon, but most places don't. So I checked with Wallingford, which always sounded like it was a great place to start to kind of keep our head above water. I think Doug, when I talked to Dougie last year, we were like $60,000, not counting our fines or Cliffy's wages by just having the dumpsters there. And I'm gonna be honest, at one point, I was almost thinking of pulling the dumpsters. And that way, you know, we could use that money for something else, but then we're gonna leave the people high and dry, but Wallingford's got a, I won't get into this too much, but once we get into working with it down there, Wallingford has just raised their price first of February, and they've gone up to what Rutland solid waste is, it's two punches. Oh, first, Wallingford, you buy punch cards, there are 20 punches and 50 punch cards. And you get one free, you get one when you pay your taxes, and then it's, every time you bring in a 13 gallon bag, it's one punch. So that's $2, and then 39, 35, 39 gallon bags are, they're going up to four punches now, and then the big ones are six punches. But we don't know how many people are coming into town using our dumpsters because Cliffy can't keep track of them all, you know, the locals, but now with all this influx of people buying the houses, Wallingford's got an ideal situation set up. If you don't have your punch card, you have to have a sticker on your window, a clear sticker. That's what we used to have way back in the 60s and 70s, is you've got a Dambie dump sticker. Wallingford issues them for new people moving into town, you get one. If you've got multiple vehicles and you can't have that vehicle to come to the dump, it only costs $3 for a clear sticker. That way, we can identify who's coming in to the dumpsters, so I'll just, I'll just kind of leave it at that, and I did check, Pollard does not have any garbage at all. I've got a cousin over there, they have to bring their recycling to Grandville. But I didn't get into it much farther, I just wanted to make sure we didn't get nailed with a five-digit fine, and so I'll leave it at that, and like I told Bob and Brad, I'll be more than willing to work with to see if we can get a system that where we can at least recoup some of our money. I've always said right from day one, even before I was on the board, that our prices were way too cheap, and of course, then the first thing I hear is, well, they're gonna throw it by the road. Well, these other towns that have it are all charging at least these prices and higher, and they don't have any more trash side of the road than what we do, but that's up to the board to decide.
So.
Well, that'll be it, that'll be it on that.
Yeah, so Paul, let me, so I think what you're saying is that we may want to revisit the question of how much we're charging and how we go about doing it, whether we use punch or stickers, and that will, you're gonna find out more information, and we're gonna revisit that another time. But in the meantime, I think I'm understanding that what you're suggesting, though, is that we change, that we put a notice out, and everybody had a copy of the notice, I can read it just to make sure that we all, so it, because you still want to post this notice, is that right, Paul?
Yeah, I think we should, just to let people know, because I told Cliffy, I said, you're the boss down here. You just let them know that when they're bringing stuff in, which they've always had a choice, now they know that you're gonna like to review that.
In case people didn't see it, so it says, Town of Dambie Notice, January 14, 2021, which is today's date, and it says, due to limited space and safety reasons, effective immediately, the Town of Dambie Transfer Station can receive only the following items. Household garbage slash trash in plastic bags, recyclable materials, which must be loose or in clear bag for inspection, and food scraps, no bags, only scraps go in the container. Then it says, the town will no longer accept the following items: electronic waste, computers, televisions, et cetera, light bulbs, bulk items like mattresses, tables, chairs, and metals. And then it goes on to say, you may take electronics, light bulbs, bulk items and metals to the Gleason Road Transfer Station in Rutland or Hubbard's at 1678 Cold River Road in North Flarendon, or you may bring them to Casellas at 310 Tennis Way in Dorset. Alternatively, you may store them at home and bring them to the town on one of our advertised dump days when we will be able to handle those materials. Thank you, your select board. So that's what we put a notice out. How do people feel about that?
Sounds good to me.
I totally agree.
Any other thoughts?
No, I think that's very good.
Okay.
And one quick item, I did ask Wallingford, like talk to Jill up there, or Julie, I mean, and I said, just for curiosity, I said, our deficit basically for the dumpsters cost us $60,000. I says, can you tell me what your income was versus what the expenses were? And of course, they got, they got 2,500 people roughly, population, we got half or less of that. Their income was $21,000, and this shocked me, their expenses, including a salary of two dump attendants, was $117,000. So doing recycle for the town is expensive on the town's part. Mark told me that we should be able to break even or make a profit, I don't know. I don't know how they figure that out, but so, and Wallingford does open only three days, they have two attendants on working at all times, two attendants, they got three half-days that they open. And when I told her we had one attend up for three full days, she was kind of shocked that we stayed open all day, but like I said, this is a.
They're sorting recyclables, yes or no?
Uh, yeah, and plus they have a, they have a dumpster up there for metals, and they do a little more recycling, and that's a drive-through thing there where you drive in and you drop stuff off in containers as you go.
So you're gonna keep looking into things and come back with us with some more recommendations, but in the meantime, effective immediately, we're going to change what we can take, and so we'll post this notice at the dump. I can get it on Front Porch Forum, we can get it on the website. Yeah, if you can get it on.
I'll put it on Dambie Families at my own site, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll ask, we'll ask Janice to get it in the news guide for us, too, that way we'll have covered bases. All right, anybody have anything to add to that, or should we move on?
I'd just, I'll put it in the report since that's coming out, too.
Say it again? Oh, the town report, yeah. Yeah.
In the town report since that's coming out next month.
Yeah, excellent idea, good. Yep.
Sounds good.
Great, so I see that, I saw a few minutes ago, yes, that Megan Sullivan is still with us. Should we move the, to your road commissioner report, Paul, and then that way the discussion about the West Side that Megan was here for, and Shelley, I think.
Don't matter, don't matter to me, whichever's more comfortable with her, because I'm not going nowhere.
Okay, Megan, would you appreciate it if we moved that up?
Hi, yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree too.
Great, hi Shelley. So you want to pick up your road commissioner report, and then I'll leave it to you how you organize that.
Okay, I can, I can start with, let me, let me start by saying, this is no way, on anybody's part, a jab at the road crew for the performance during that unprecedented storm. And I'm, I'm not in any way, shape, or form saying that the West Side should be taken care of before anybody else. But I have some questions, and I've been talking to people, you know, on the road, and why don't I just go through the questions, and you guys can respond to them after, if that works? And then Megan has firsthand account of the emergency situation that went on over here on that night?
Yep.
Does that work?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, so, my first question is, how are the roads being prioritized these days? I know there was a plan on prioritizing. It used to revolve around farms and schools and stuff during bad storms. So that was the first question. The second question, is there an emergency plan in town? I'm not aware of one that, you know, involves, I mean, this storm had a great opportunity for tragedy to occur, you know, because people couldn't get out, couldn't get help, whatever. And I understand, I talked to Paul, I know Shelley Park talked to Lynn, and there was a comment in there that our roads over here on the West Side were low priority because there are no medical, you know, potential medical emergencies over here, because everybody's in good health. And I don't know where that information came from, but it's not correct.
It did not come from me.
No, I think it came from Lynn, but I have more questions. I have two more.
May I clarify that? So I never said that they're low priority, what I said is that if we know there are medical emergencies, those go first, and we didn't know of any ahead of time there.
That's one of my next questions.
Yeah.
It goes back to the emergency plan. I know years ago in most towns, there was an emergency plan to reach out to people who were vulnerable on the roads during these kind of events, and I don't see that that's in place in Dambie, or if it used to be, it's not any longer. But here's, here's the other two. The decision was left pretty late in the day, and again, I know this storm came out of nowhere, and we weren't ready for it, obviously, I don't know if any town was ready for it. But when I was talking to Paul, it was probably, I don't know, 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and we weren't going to get any help until the next day. So why, why was it left so late? And the last question, well, two questions actually. We have a grater, we used to have a plow for it. I didn't, I didn't hear the grater being on the road at all, and, or any road, and was Hunter Corporation, or whatever they are, through Johnny, were they called, were they contacted before Tommy Fuller, who's right here in town with equipment? So those are my questions, and maybe Megan wants to tell, oh, I missed one. Why is it that if there's an emergency situation, like there was on the West Side, nobody in the town select board knew about it, and that's a breakdown. I would think if there's some kind of emergency going on, you guys would need to know, and I don't know why you don't. So maybe Megan wants to take over now for the situation that did happen.
Hold on a second, while the question's fresh in my mind, I'll jump in that front of Megan, if you don't mind. Uh, yes. The storm came out of nowhere, it was calling for five, maybe eight, nine inches? And we ended up.
Even that.
Like 42. If we would have known ahead of time, we did have, we did have a backup driver, which we ended up using, and then we ended up with Steve, another one, but if we'd have known, we could have put the V-plow on the grater and chained that up, but by the time we realized how much snow was coming down, we didn't have time to do that, so I'm scrambling around trying to get, thinking of a contact around. Everybody, Abbott's weren't around, and I'll be honest, I totally, I knew Tommy had equipment, but he didn't have a grater that was picking up, but I knew he was busy trying to get Hunter excavation on Stock and Mount Paver. I had called Johnny, and they had a Bogoser coming that night, and then they couldn't get a driver, and they couldn't get anything out, and by the time I found out that they weren't coming, and they were supposed to be here that morning, somebody asked me, why didn't you get Tommy with his loader with the four chains on it? And be honest with you, between forgetting he had that set up and him using it, the Mount Paver, I'll take the blame for that, or else we would have probably got Tommy quicker, because, I mean, he did a fantastic job the next morning when he got there. And I apologize for not calling him, and I, like I said, I apologize for, you know, I had as many, I called loggers, anybody that had any heavy equipment around, and everybody was either using it or unavailable. And we were just trying to get our roads so we could, you know, make them passable and keep up with it. So you can go.
So can I, I just want to jump in, I think that that speaks to a question Shelley asked about an emergency plan, and I couldn't agree with you more, Shelley, that we, we need to have a plan for what, what happens when something like that, and, you know, maybe even have, you know, you know, what private contractors would be on call and would be called in first, who has the equipment that we need, you know, which ones would make our town a priority, because they might be being asked for by other towns, too, and, you know, and have a plan, and I guess to that end, you know, that's all, you know, that is, is something that, yes, we realize needs to be there and we'll be working on.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to chastise anybody, or looking, even for an apology. What I'm looking for is to make sure no citizen in this town is left at risk, because we, I know these storms don't happen often, and I realize these storms, there hasn't been one for 30 years like this, and I get that, but moving forward, we need to do something, because somebody is going to be seriously hurt, lose their home to fire, or God forbid, not be able to reach an emergency and die.
Yeah, no, I agree, we need to have an emergency plan that's more robust than what we have, absolutely. And just one other question that you asked that I would, you know, I know that I knew there was an emergency over on the West, and I know Paul knew, we knew. The problem is I couldn't get off my street either. You know, it was, everybody was, and it was, you know, it was a very scary situation, I'm sure.
It was, and just so you know, Tim was able to make an emergency run with his antique plow truck with chains on down to Harrington's and all the way to the end of the road to get Sarah Richardson to her father, who needs medical attention. So I know Paul and I had discussed the fact that it was pretty dangerous to send a plow truck over here, but Tim and his little, you know, half-ton or whatever it is, plow truck, was able to make that run and get up there successfully and get back home. So just FYI, and that was all uphill. So Megan can speak to what went on down on the end of the road with the medical emergency, I just have it secondhand.
Can I add something first?
Yeah? I think so.
Uh, I, I'd just like to put it out there, the V-plow that we had, the Austin Mustang grater, I believe was sold when we got rid of the Austin Mustang grater. We have a plow for the grater that we've gotten out, but it's just not a V-plow.
Okay. Good to know. Maybe that had a V-plow.
Yeah, the other thing I want to interject in here is, you know, I know that we haven't had a storm in 30 years, but you know, with storms, whether it's rain events or whatever, they are more likely to start becoming more severe in nature, that's, that's what's happening, that's the weather patterns. So I think that really begs us to make sure that we have some emergency plans in place, and, and, and. And, 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 and I think that's an excellent point.
And, you know, just putting it out there, if, if we need to form a committee, um, to do this, sign me up.
Okay, and we do have, we do have an, an emergency, um, we do have some emergency planning in town. And, um, Tom Johnson heads that up. Um, so we've got people who do work on it, but, um, but again, that storm caught everybody, you know, off guard. And we need to come up with a plan for what happens if we're caught off guard again. We need to have something in place that we can fall back on.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Meg, you still there?
Hi, I'm still here.
All right, you're up.
Hi, um, I, I, really, I just want to second what Shelley said, as far as, um, uh, having an emergency plan, which I think Lynn touched on and Paul touched on already. Um, and, um, you know, just so we're clear, we're not talking about the, you know, inconveniences, because inconveniences are, are living in Vermont when, when it snows. So, um, we couldn't get to work for a couple of days, um, and there was some other inconveniences, which, um, like I said, is just part of living in Vermont. I think my concern comes in, um, that there was an emergency. Um, and the emergency, um, had a couple of different layers to it. Um, the first is that the woman turned down the road and her car got stuck in the snow. So, um, because the, what, we had three, three feet of snow, right? So her car got stuck, um, she couldn't get to the paved road, or, or, um, up the road or down the road. Um, so she got out of her, she got out of her car and started to walk. And walking in three feet of snow is pretty difficult, too. Um, so, um, she walked up the road and, you know, calling for help. And it was really difficult for my husband and my kids to go help her in three feet of snow, obviously. Um, and then another layer of that was that when 911 was called, they couldn't get down our road. Um, so it, it just was kind of, um, uh, you know, well, it was scary. It was scary, and, um, we just want to be a part of the solution. And, um, like Shelley said, if there's a committee that's formed, um, we truly, you know, would want to be a part of that. Um, and I'm just speaking for, there's twelve of us that live here, um, between the two houses, and they range from ten months, um, to seventy-three years old. Um, so we just want to make sure that, well, I just want to make sure that, you know, my, my family's safe, and, and that we can get emergency help when needed, and actually, anyone else here on, here on the west side. Um, so if we can be helpful in any way, um, just let us know.
Yeah, what I'd like to know is, why would anybody go out with a car with three foot of snow? Why would you even try it with three foot of snow?
She's not from around here, Doug. She has no, had no idea, she was traveling, from what I understand. She obviously didn't know we were going to have three foot of snow, I don't believe.
None of us did. And it's not, no, it's not just the west side. My road, and I'm on a continuation of, uh, Corey Hill. I, I never got plowed up here. Um, the only reason I got plowed was my son plowed from a house, because the standard procedure on the roads, and I'll get back to that, Shelley, what you're saying is, uh, school bus routes get taken care of first. And then we try to get the farmers get to take care of. And then it's the, the major routes and stuff that, the most traveled routes. But like I said, this storm came out of nowhere. And we were just trying to keep the major arteries open, and it wasn't, it wasn't just the west side. Yes, the west side was, was bad over there, but we, we had a lot of dead-end roads that don't get hit. And, you know, we, we spent three days trying to get things cleaned up, and just so we can make them passable. You know, the road crew busted their balls, um, you know, we had, we called in, Donnie, he got stuck trying to get down. Uh, he had to get pulled out, and Steve came to our rescue with another truck. And so we had four drivers just trying to keep up with fifteen hours, we had forty-two inches of snow. And that's totally unheard of for three-day storms, sometimes they get that much, but not fifteen hours. I mean, yeah, everybody was caught off guard, I'm not making excuses.
No.
Mother Nature did not help us at all. And, and if I'd thought I'd known that it was going to be this much, or any other of the towns, we would've got, uh, like I said, Abbott's was out, they were busy doing their own thing. And Tommy, now that I know that he was available, we can get him ahead of time, but we didn't, we didn't know this was happening. So, you know, if anybody's to blame on this thing, it's Mother Nature. We, we tried, I, I'm, I was on the phone that day, almost for ten to twelve hours, trying to get subcontractors, uh, uh, anybody with log skidder, any, anybody get there, and there was nobody available. I mean, it was just one of them things.
And to speak to, this is Megan again, um-
Guys all crying over nothing, I think.
Um, I, I-
You don't feel like crying, you're bad.
Uh, and, and we're not, we're not speaking to, um, this is Megan. Um, we're not speaking to what people were trying to do, or not trying to do. This, this is not, certainly not a, um, trying to blame anyone. I'm just speaking from experience that the emergency was very scary, and, um, we're trying to, um, not have it happen again. And, um, we, another layer to this was that our, you know, fire and rescue couldn't come down this road. And we had to wait, we had to go to Granville to, um, through their emergency department, because they're the only ones with a snowmobile. So this woman needed to be rescued by snowmobile. And that took another, you know, that took another couple of, you know, you know, hours to get there. Um, so this, this certainly is not, you know, I, I, I apologize if people are taking offense or, or feel like I'm blaming, because I'm certainly not doing that. Um, I'm just here to speak to, um, you know, how can we help the road, you know, the road crew make decisions? Or, um, ha- come up with an emergency plan? And the woman, the woman, um, did, she, um, she came off the plow road, the road, um, Danby, Danby Pollitt Road was plowed. So she came down that road thinking it wasn't that bad. And then, of course, when she turned onto our road, Green Hill Road, that's when it got, um, dangerous, and that's when she got stuck.
And Steve? Well, I think, I think that, you know, um, having, um, a more robust, you know, emergency plan for things like that, 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 you know, is, you know, is a, uh, strong idea. And then I want to add to Paul's list of priorities. Um, it is absolutely so that if, if we know ahead of time, so if, if somebody's, if somebody needs dialysis daily, they need to let the road crew know that, because that would be a road that would have to get, you know, plowed out earlier. That would be a higher priority. Um, my road had a woman on hospice, so the road crew came and did that road earlier, so the caregivers could get, you know, get to her. Two hours later, they couldn't get away, out, they couldn't get away, but they were at least- Um, but we knew that, she since passed away. But, um, so if people know of, you know, really ongoing medical needs, that would make that road a higher priority, please let us know, and the person to call would be Paul.
Paul, okay.
And I can do that, because I do have, um, senior citizen parents and a mom with a heart condition. So I will, do I need to put that in writing, or?
Yeah, I bet, I mean, if they've got medical needs that are, so, so, for instance, so what we're talking about isn't, we're, we're talking about somebody who would, would have daily medical needs that would require them to get out, or somebody to get to them to care for them in a, in a critical health situation. Um, it wouldn't be that they had a doctor's appointment that that day that they couldn't make it to. That wouldn't qualify for the difference.
Hey, hey Lynn, let me clarify that. Uh, so I'm not getting bombarded with phone calls. The call goes to 911. I was notified by the state police that day that there was problems over on the west side. And they said they were just trying to make me aware of it. I said, yeah, I said, I'm aware, I got, I got phone calls, but I said, we can't get any vehicles in there. Because there was cars, the calls that I had, there was cars that were trying to get out, got stuck. And if we, if, even if we could've got a plow truck up in there, if there wasn't as much snow, we may not have been able to get by, because these people were trying to move with this much snow. And I, I know, you know, it sounds like excuses, but it's not, we, you know, you, um, so the calls go to 911, which both of the state police-
Yeah, the emergencies calls go. But I'm, I'm talking about that, that if, if, if there's somebody, you know, on, on, um, Little Village Road right now, that if they don't get dialysis every day, you know, needs to, um, you know, that that road would be a higher priority because of that, then I think that we should, we should know that ahead of time. Because that's not a 911 emergency, that's, that's information that goes into our plan in terms of prioritizing.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know, you know, if there's HIPAA, you know, you're not supposed to tell your, or nobody's supposed to share your medical information and whatever. I don't even know if it would be a vague, you know, on this road, there is patients under dialysis, cancer patients needing chemo, you know, insulin-dependent diabetic, I don't know how that works.
Well, it could just, I, I think what we're looking for is if somebody, if, if somebody on a daily basis needs medical intervention, then we would-
Oh, I, I under- I understand that, however-
The intervention is.
Right.
But, but what I'm saying is, it's not, it's not that my mom's here and she had a doctor's appointment today.
No, 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 not at all.
Yeah.
But under normal conditions, you would've been able to get out with somebody with a four-wheel drive.
Right.
But this wasn't normal conditions, which, like I said, the one that we got to blame is Mother Nature hit us with a whammy. And it caught, I mean, it wasn't his dandy. Um, everybody got caught off guard. And yeah, so I feel bad, you know, that somebody tried to get out that needed a medical emergency. And Dorset is prepared for stuff like that, because they have a rescue with snowmobiles and four-wheeler with tracks on them to get it out of there.
Yeah, we had to go to Granville.
They can get them.
You know, back, back to the first point, this is no way blaming anybody, road crew, select board, or anybody. You all did what you could do, and I get that. Was it inconvenient? Well, yes. But, you know, thankfully, nobody's house caught fire, and thankfully, this woman was able to be rescued. Um, I just want to make sure going forward, we're better prepared, because to Lynn's point, these storms, rain events and whatever, are becoming more frequent. Call it global warming, or whatever you want to call it. Um, it can happen again, and I don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Thank you, Shelley, that, that sums up my point as well.
Yeah, and thank you, Shelley, for coming and talking with us, great. Um, Paul, anything else to ask in terms of your road commissioner's report? Should we finish that up before we move to the other?
Oh, yeah, 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 I kind of got sidetracked here. Um, just, uh, well, that was my number-one item, the big storm we got. We, uh, we did have Donnie come in, and Steve stepped up and jumped in our other tandem. So we were, we had four drivers out and everything, so, you know, and I want to thank everybody that helped. And, you know, Fuller Sand and Gravel for getting the west side done. And, and there was other, other people around that did help that I probably didn't know about. But everybody contributed, and like I said, it was basically a two-to-three-day cleanup to get people back on the road again, so thank you to everybody. Uh, number two is, um, our international truck, which couldn't quite make it through the full storm. Uh, that is up there, um, Earl's trucking, getting repaired. And so that's, will we wait to hear from them. And also, we do have a, uh, on-call driver. Uh, so we, we have our third person, which will come in whenever we need him. And, uh, so that's, that's the most important thing is. And then we've always got, I see Steve put on one of our emails, that he'd always be willing to help to jump in. So we appreciate that, too.
Great.
I guess that's about it.
Um, I saw, see that we have on there the, the Better Back Roads application, and I, I can just mention that, that, um, that was due just before Christmas, and Devin Neary, um, scrambled with me to get an application in. Um, what we essentially did was, uh, we, we put in the same application we did last year that didn't get funded. He thought it had a good chance of getting funded this year. Um, and, uh, and that's for, um, over on Green, Green Hill Road. Um, supports the work that Hillary's been talking to us about, um, you know, and, and others. And we'll see, and it may or may not get, you know, um, uh, approved. And then the paving and structures grants, um, I had been in touch with, um, uh, I'm trying to think, was that, I think that was Chris Taft that we had to get in touch with on that. And, um, and, and I was told that, that those, um, they're not sure if they're going to be out this year and how they're going to handle them, but, but they won't know until spring. But then later on, Janice got some information, um, from Greg suggesting that we, we might want to, um, stay on top of that, that the early bird might get the worm on that. So that's something that, um, you know, um, Paul, we should probably be talking about. And maybe, at the very least, um, you know, I don't know if, if you all have talked about, um, what we, what would be paved this next year, uh, assuming that we can get a grant, where, where, where we want to go and how many miles of road, it would be helpful to have that information on hand in case we have a, you know, a quick opportunity to apply for some money.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, other than that, oh, I would also bring up one other thing. I received a request from a, a citizen on White Birch Lane, um, which is, you know, the Little Village connection up to Green Hill, um, very steep. Um, they, um, that's a private road, and they had to pay $2,000 to have a, um, heavy equipment come in and clear their road in the big storm. Um, and they made a request that the town might consider adapting, adopting their road as a town highway. I wrote back and said, I've never been asked that before, that I would have to check into it. Um, but, uh, um, yeah, so I just toss out there, um, you know, I, I, I seem to remember a conversation we've had before where we've said we're not interested in taking on additional roads, um, um, but, but I'd be interested to hear what people's thoughts are on that.
I'd make sure we tell them no. Tell them no.
Well, I got, I got three words, Lynn, ain't no way.
Well, I-
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what Tom Fuller said when he did it privately. He got halfway up the hill, and he said, what the hell did I get into? Who the hell would live up here?
Right, that's their problem.
Yep, you bought the house, you-
Yeah, okay, I think we said, we, we discussed it in the town, you know, that the town is not prepared to take on that, you know, obligation, that, um, yeah. All right, that's what I sort of assumed. All I could think of, as I thought about this, was that, you know, I, I, I'm always, uh, uh, not being very nice about whoever it was who added Parker Road, because look what that cost us. I sure don't want to be the one that had another Parker Road-type situation, yeah. Um, yeah, it's not a place where the town would have willingly built a-
I can think of five others that immediately come to mind, and maybe more if I sat down with the map. So once you start, then you got to do it for all, so no.
Yeah.
And Lynn, can I just circle back real quick, I know you guys are busy. Um, so though the, um, the board will work on an emergency plan, and then, um, will that get out to us in writing? Or, or front porch forum, or, or how will that get out to people?
Um, so I thought what I'd do is I'll contact Tom Johnson and the folks that already have our, our skeleton, you know, plan, and see about putting together a little committee to take a look at it. Um, so, yeah, I think that's the, the first start. The other thing, Megan, that I'll mention is that, um, the town of Danby has, um, recently, um, um, we've, we've been advertising for a road commissioner, it's a management position. Um, it would give us a fourth driver in an emergency, which would be great, we'd have yet another driver. But, but our expectation is that that person is going to be the person to put in place things like an emergency plan, backup plans for, you know, what contractors could help in what section of town and things like that. So it may be that we, um, I, I, I think I'd like to hire that person and really put that person in charge, and have somebody really own the plan, and then let, let them get in touch with citizens who can help with that. But, um, but I think it's something we still have to noodle on a little bit, so, um, but it is definitely on our minds, yeah.
Okay, thank you all so much, thank you very much. Thank you, Paul, thank you, great, thank you.
Megan, Megan, hold on a minute, uh, you mentioned having a, a road plan for how we plow the roads. We already have that adopted, it's right in our, uh, it's right in our procedures, how, you know, what roads get taken care of.
Yeah, that was Shelley.
Or Shelley, either one, it's already in our, uh, what we drew up back years ago. Um, what the prioritizing of the roads and stuff are.
Yeah, yeah.
So like, like I said, this was unusual conditions, we usually follow that right to a T, but, um, this time was, we just couldn't do it- So like, like I said, this was unusual conditions. We usually follow that right to a T, but, um, this time was, we just couldn't do it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the information. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Thank you, Megan.
Bye bye.
Um, so let me look back at our agenda. Um, let's go maybe to talking about our, uh, town meeting planning. I think that's where we left off. Um, so Brad, you can jump in and help me with this if I get anything wrong because Brad was on a phone call with Janice and Colette yesterday. But, um, but essentially, um, essentially the way it works out is that for our town meeting, um, we, uh, we don't have a large enough venue to be able to have a town meeting safely in times of COVID. Um, so we have two choices. We could postpone our meeting, um, or we, um, can move everything to Australian ballot. Um, and really everything means moving only one article, um, that there's two articles we vote on every year that we don't have to vote on. They're just sort of archaic, maybe kind of like wares of coal. Um, you know, we don't need to ask people for, to approve the town report. There's no legal, um, affect to that. And, um, we also don't need to ask about, um, borrowing money. We have the right under the state statute to borrow money. So the only question that would move to the Australian ballot is the one about, um, collecting the taxes and the date the taxes are set. And if we vote tonight, and that's what I'm suggesting is that we as a select board vote to say that in, for 2021, um, that our town meeting for that year will be all Australian ballot. We can go back to the old way next year, absolutely, once COVID is passed. And, um, and then what happens is instead of having a town meeting, which we're not allowed to have remotely because you can't vote from the floor in a remote setting, it just doesn't work. Um, what we then have instead is an informational meeting. And we can do that remotely and we could, I, my suggestion might be that we do it the same Monday night before the meeting. If that's the night people are used to getting together. And we basically have the same agenda that we always have. We review the budget and, and answer any, any questions that come from people. The only thing different we'd be doing is we wouldn't be voting on those three articles because two of them we're never voting on again because they're just ridiculous. One of them, um, will just move to the Australian ballot for that one year. So that would be my suggestion. And Brad, does that, that pretty much sums up what you heard too, right?
Yeah, absolutely correct.
So I'd love to hear. Yeah.
I would make a motion to, um, adopt. Everybody have a copy of the warning that you put out?
Yeah, I don't know if people do. And, and that's still probably a little bit of a rough draft because we've got to insert some language about the absentee ballots and also we're supposed to list all the officers.
Okay. So we just want to have a motion then to, um, move the article about the date that the taxes are collected to the Australian ballot.
Yeah, it's, and, and maybe to broaden out a little bit, that, that, you know, the, the, the motion might be that for the year 2021, our town, you know, town meeting will be, you know, all of our articles will be decided by Australian ballot.
I'll make the motion.
All right. So we've got, um.
I'll make the motion.
All right. So we've got Doug and Brad.
Yes.
All right. Um, so Brad said yes. Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay. So now that we've done that, then we'll, we'll work on the language for the actual warning because we have to change it a little bit. And that's what Brad was referring, that I'd sent out a draft. But if that's an initial draft, I think maybe, um, once we get the language correct, we'll just email it to people and, and let, and, and agree that, um, you know, that, that, that we, maybe we all say that we'll, we agree that we'll sign the warning unless something substantive changes on it. And then we'll talk about it and have a meeting. Does that work?
By the 20th.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and I think we're pretty much there with the draft. What we need to do is add the actual offices we're voting for, and then we need to add some information on, on absentee ballots. Um.
I'd also like that article in that I talked about before.
Through, oh yeah, and the article that you talked about before. Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Will you get that wording to Janice? Or get it to me and I'll add it to when you did it. Yeah. Or you could plug it in yourself. But yeah, once you just get it to me, that'd be great.
Real quick, Paul Pierce was, made that motion and it was seconded by.
I think Brad.
Okay.
I think it was Doug and Brad.
Was it Doug and Brad? Okay.
Yeah.
How do people feel about having the informational meeting on that Monday night? We could do it anytime up to 10 days before, but I'm just thinking that that's the night people are used to getting together and have set aside. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay. And remind me, um, well, actually I have the town report in front of me. What time we, we do those, we start those meetings at 7:30, correct? Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah. So we'll go with, we'll stay with what's traditional in the hopes that we'll get the most people participating. And they'll be able to participate by, by phone or by computer.
Sounds good.
All right. Um, let's see, moving on down here. So I had on the agenda a liquor license for Otter Creek. I never ended up getting the copy of it, but I, and just in case we haven't approved that, can I hear a motion to, uh, uh, renew the liquor license for Otter Creek Campground?
I'll make the motion.
Did you get that, Chris?
No.
So I think it was, was it Steve and Paul?
Doug made the motion.
Doug.
I'll second it.
Okay, Doug and Paul made the motion. And so we're going to, um, renew the liquor license for the Otter Creek Campground. And I think folks that we all need to sign that and Janice will have it in the office. So can people check in with her and see about getting it signed in the next couple of days? I think it's, uh, it, it might be a little time sensitive for the campground. They don't want to not be able to sell that beer. So. Um, next is, uh.
Do you want to vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Um, so we have a motion, uh, from Doug and Paul to renew the liquor license and we'll do the vote. Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay. Um, so the next thing is the, our certification of mileage. Um, and we sent that around. That was with the materials that I sent. Um, now I have to find it myself. Um, I think this is the annual, um, you know, that we, we, uh, agree what the, um, mileage is for the town of Danby for our roads. Um, and I think that the only issue is that at some point I think we have to toss up, uh, we're not, obviously we're not going to add a road. We just decided that, but I do think that we need to toss up and do whatever legally we have to do to take shortcut road off of there.
I agree. Yeah, we got a couple, we got a couple other ones too.
Do we? Um.
Uh, we got that one from Greens over to, um, Lily Hill.
Oh, yeah.
Before that ends up in a Clyde Meyer.
That's right.
But you know what? That one's not, I don't think that, let me find the certification because that one I don't think is the, is the class road that we need to worry about. But, but let me look. Um, I gotta find the certificate. Uh, give me a minute.
Well, it's still a class four road by properties border. And if we don't throw that up, somebody buys one of that chunks of property, we're going to end up putting in a road.
Yeah, right. I'd say we get it thrown up. Before it ends up costing us what it did on the parking road.
All right. And actually I think that I might've fallen asleep on this one. I, I'll, I'll contact John Thrasher and, and get this started. Oh, I remember I did talk to them. Um, the problem was that he was so busy doing real estate sales that we didn't, we didn't get back to it. Um, so I'll, I'll renew that with him. So Paul, will you send me a list of the roads? We know it's that Green Hill to Lily Hill. We know it's shortcut. What, what else was there?
Uh, I'll send you a list because I got a couple. I'd like to see you throw them out, but I don't want to say it on here.
Uh, okay. But, but for right now, we know, we know those two and those aren't controversial, right?
Definitely.
Yeah. All right. Well, and anyway, it will be the same process no matter what. So I'll at least find out what the process is and get it moving. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
And then we're not, fine, we're not going to sign this tonight.
Well, that's it. I was just trying to find it. I haven't found it yet.
But yeah, you know, all this says is the mileage on class one roads, the mileage on class two and the mileage on class three and the mileage on state highways. And the mileage on class four, and then we have, uh, 0.08 legal trail.
Right. So I don't know. I, I guess, I, um, is there a time thing on when we have to sign this?
I don't know why we can't tie that out because that's our existing roads, are you?
Yeah.
Nothing's really changed.
I think we sign that and then we will have to change it when we actually throw up the roads. But until we have, and it's a legal process, it's going to take time and warnings. So I think that for now, right now, that's officially what we have. Does that work for people?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And I still can't find the document, silly me. It must be here somewhere. But how, do you, Brad, if you have it in front of you, how many signatures does it take?
Uh, it looks like three.
Okay. So then, um, what will? Yeah, we'll have to put that down at the town office and if people will go in and sign it in the next couple of days, that'd be great. But first we better vote to approve it. So can I hear a motion made to sign it?
I'll make the motion.
That's Doug.
I'll second it.
Steve? Uh, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay, great. And yeah, people can make it business to go in and sign that and the liquor license, that would be good. Um, let me find the agenda and see where we are. Um, oh, a discussion of the equalization study results. So, um, Brad and I looked at this today. Um, it looks like our, um, uh, common level of appraisal or whatever is up to 24.5%. And we've known that we've been above 20 and that we need to reappraise and we've been having discussions about that. But the interesting thing is that we think that that was done before all these new, um, uh, before the new run on property. And since we're seeing properties go for sometimes over a hundred thousand dollars more than what they were asking. Um, we're thinking that, 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 that study may be out of date. So I think that maybe before we, um, before we act, we should try to get an answer from the state as to whether or not they're going to update that considering the change in the real estate market in, in Vermont. Um, because I'd hate to have to go through all that if in fact it's just done a correction on its own. What do people think?
I think we should have the listeners contact them and, um, report back to us.
That's a great idea. Why do we have to do it? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's have the listeners do that. Um, Brad, would you mind chatting with, uh, uh, with the listeners about that?
Sure.
Super. Uh, let's see, what's next on here? Make sure, uh, we've been skipping around a bit. So if people just sort of make sure I haven't forgotten anything, um, certificate equalization, Green Mountain Power Road Commissioner. Actually, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we're almost down. Let me just go through the other things. I mentioned Herb Ogden. I mentioned, uh, we did that, uh, approximately to the date, um.
We have a fleet permit.
Oh, right. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, our fleet permit. Who's the fleet permit for?
Barrett Trucking.
Okay. And does he have, what, does it say? What, what is weights and how many trucks?
Uh, let's see. There are four axle trucks. And a five axle truck and a six axle truck. And, um, the first one is 69,000. The five axle is 90,000. The other six axle is 99,000. And, um, I guess this is a tractor trailer for one piece of equipment, 108,000.
I'll make a motion.
So that's.
I'll second it.
Steve's second. Any discussion? So we'll call Brad. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Well, I think we still want to try to tackle, you know, did not have these big, big, big trucks on roads. Um, if they're, if it's, if they're not working along that road.
Yeah. And I was just going to say, I want to qualify my vote to say as long as I don't use GIS.
Yeah. Paul, have you had any progress on working with the state to make them stop sending?
I can't, I can't get ahold of the state and any of the numbers that Greg gave me. I'm going to have to have Greg find out who, who to directly call. Cause every time I try to call the state, I end up getting a runner on, go to here, go to there, and then nobody picks up. So I have to get back with Greg and find out what his connection is. You know, they put you for a nailer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Um, oh, um, is, uh, so I don't know if, if Doug, our treasurer's still on the call. Um, I don't know when the date is that appropriations are due. So we, we've got our budget and we, um, oh, did we, did we actually vote? Yeah, we voted to accept the budget. So I don't know. What, what do we do if, if late appropriations requests come in? Should we just assume that's not going to happen?
Yeah.
Well, if it does, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it because at this point we've approved the budget and maybe we just say that it's over for this year.
That's right.
All right.
Get next year.
Yeah. Um, let's see, let me just, I'm looking through to make sure I haven't forgotten anything. I mentioned White Birch Lane. We talked about the warning and we'll come up with the draft. Um, oh, um, the road commissioner. Um, so I guess we'll just sort of under other business. Um, our road commissioner, we, we did, we didn't get robust applications, which isn't surprising considering we advertised just before Christmas. Um, and we didn't do it that broadly. We really did V trans and just local. Um, so I, I think, you know, through emails, we've, you know, I've heard ideas that, um, uh, that we extend our application deadline and some people said till March and other people said till February. I'm thinking that if we get, get it out, if I get it out this tomorrow, um, you know, maybe we do it through the middle of February or maybe, you know, like February 22nd or something, and we can always just, you know, repost it. Um, but if we put a deadline, it might not procrastinate.
Now we got a, we got our on-call person. We can pick our time with, uh, I mean, if you get a qualified individual that we want in there.
Yeah, absolutely. This person really needs to have management experience and, and not just be in it, not, I, I mean, the greatest equipment operator in the world, it, it, that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for somebody who also has management skills. So yeah, we wait until we find the right person, but, but, um, but I'll repost the date and we'll say, I'll make it like three quarters of the way through February to give people another month to apply. And I'll post it at the Department of Labor as well and V trans. And let's, you know, we, we did the, um, news guide, but why don't we also hit a Rutland, maybe we need to hit the Rutland Herald? Um, and maybe the Manchester.
On Herald.
Yeah. All right.
I, I wish, I don't think you should be in no hurry. As long as you got somebody.
Yeah. But we'll get, we'll get that out.
I hit the deadline.
Rutland Herald or Burlington Free Press?
Yeah, we could. Or Digger. Yeah.
I think. Press.
Yeah. Um, the other thing that was.
Another one just popped in mind. Why can't we get, uh, what's the Post Stire over there in Granville? Cause that's only a 15 mile drive.
Sure.
From New York City.
Sure. Yep. Good idea. Good idea. Um, the other thing that came up as another business, we, we had to do a survey for FEMA this week, um, as part of our hazard mitigation plan and getting the money for them to pay for that. And, um, it asked if we had a conflict of interest policy in writing. And I don't know that we do. We, we have a purchase policy. We have, you know, other policies, but I don't know that we have a conflict of interest policy. Um, and they also asked if we had a grants management policy in writing. Um, and a. And they also asked if we had a grants management policy in writing and a payroll policy in writing. And, you know, it may be that we, we should, we should do these things. How do people feel about it? Certainly, conflict of interest, I think, is necessary. We should have a conflict of interest policy written. Well, we have one. We should have a written one.
What was the other one besides payroll?
Grants management.
Branch management?
Grants. So another, yeah, it would have to do with how we keep track of grant money that we're spending. And and we, we have very good practices in place for that as our audit showed, but we don't have a separate place where we, we write down what the policy, what we're doing. And sometimes it makes it easier to get grants if you can show that you have something in writing. You know what I mean?
That's where a road commissioner comes in.
Yeah.
Right. County manager.
Right. All right. Well, why don't we, why don't we revisit that one when we get that person on board? But in the meantime, I, I'm wondering, we may already have a conflict of interest policy, but if we don't, I think we should. I'll check.
I think we should have one.
Yeah. I mean, that's just so basic. And it should just be in writing. I mean, I'm not saying we don't have them. We were very careful about conflicts of interest, but but we should have something in writing. That's just good practice. So I'll check if we do. And if we don't, I'll, I'll come up with a draft first to consider the next meeting. How's that sound?
Okay, sounds good.
And then I think, I think that's all I had. Anybody have anything else to add? Or is there any public still with us to make public comment?
I got one quick thing, and maybe not even, maybe it's already been taken care of, but I noticed in the emails that they're still looking for an auditor. Tammy said she couldn't do it.
Yeah. We are.
What about asking Byron again?
That's a great idea. Yeah.
He started, he, he kind of showed interest in it back a year or so ago when we were looking. And maybe possibility rather than us go without one, and he's more than qualified.
Yeah, we can ask him. I, I know that, I talked to him back when we were looking to appoint somebody. And remember then, he said that, that he wasn't going to be year round in town. And I noticed that during the big storm, his driveway wasn't plowed. So.
Okay.
So we might, but but there's nothing wrong with asking, so feel free.
Maybe they turned into, yeah.
Yeah.
Who was that? Mervyn Gates?
Yeah.
Yeah. He's in Florida.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so.
Do it remote. Everything's remote nowadays. I said, they can do things remote. So.
Yeah.
Something to look into.
Yeah, we do. But let's make a point of, you're, you're right. And thanks for bringing it up. The town, that's an office that nobody has put in to run for, and we need somebody who will do that. Tammy agreed to fill in when we had a, an opening. And she is, my hat's off to her because she's absolutely slammed at work with her work, but she is fulfilling her obligation and she is the one who's putting together the town report.
Yep.
And so I'm very appreciative, but I have to respect the fact that she's saying that she, you know, especially if she doesn't get help from other people, she's just feeling she can't, you know, run and do it another year.
Yep. Nobody's, nobody's running for that position this year?
No, we need somebody to run for auditor. And they've got to be willing to do the work. I mean, we've had auditors that have never showed up.
Right, right.
And, and Mary has done work this year on, with Doug on, on some of the auditing. But in terms of doing the town report, she's too busy at work to be able to help with the town report. So it's falling all on Tammy. Yeah.
Charlie Dotson, one of them?
Yeah, I know the other.
Yeah. I know. I think it's Myron Green.
Oh, is it?
I think so. And yeah, I think it's Myron, but I'm not positive.
Well, I was thinking of Charlie Dotson, too.
It was. And, and, yeah, it was, but I don't think it is anymore. But I could be wrong. Yeah.
Well, is any Paul Mike or what's going on?
So, yeah.
If Mike Green is the one, did they call him or what?
Yes. I'm told that they did. Yeah.
Huh.
I was told that the call was put into him and I, and I don't think anybody's heard back. But I'm not positive it's him. And I want to be sure. As a matter of fact, I'm looking in the, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking. So, yeah, so actually, maybe, yeah, Charlie, Charlie Dotson's term expired March of 2020. So my guess is the information is right that it's Myron.
Yeah, it's Myron then.
I think. So, but anyway, if anybody knows, we really need somebody who can use, you know, knows how to use spreadsheets and knows, has some accounting background. And we got a lot of new people in town. So spread the word. Maybe we can, somebody who would, you know, would like to do it. We've got new people, new businesses. Those are all people who would have the skills to do that.
Can we drill that out on front porch?
Yeah, good idea. That's a great idea.
What about, what about Heedy, who was doing the minutes there? Does she do spreadsheets and stuff?
I'm sure she does that, but I'm not, but it's, you know, auditing wouldn't be the thing that would float her boat most. But maybe Eric, maybe her husband. So, yeah, but I think Paul made a good idea. What if we put together a little announcement of what we're, that we're looking for somebody to run for that and get it on front porch in Danby Families?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
The, whatever you call it, the agreement to run has to be in.
Yeah. So Brad, I'm, so the other thing that I'm working on is our select board letter. And I don't have a draft now because I really couldn't do it until I knew for sure what we were going to do for the, you know, how we were going to handle the Australian ballot. Because I think that letter should explain what we're doing and why. So I'll have a draft that I'll get to you guys probably over the weekend to take a look at. But I'm kind of slammed with writing that. Brad, is there any way that you could put together a little notice about the auditor's position and get that on front porch in Danby Families?
Oh, yeah, sure.
That'd be great.
Brad, you put it on there. I'll copy, paste it, put it on Danby Families.
Okay.
Great. All right. Anything else?
I think we ought to adjourn.
I think I just heard a motion from Paul to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I think I've got two seconds. Very good. All right. We'll just do an all in favor and call it a roll call. Is anybody opposed to adjourning? There we go. We're adjourned and thank you all.